Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 17th meeting of the school committee. Start off with any public participation. Seeing none? Good news, Dr. Rabinevich.
Well, I was gonna save this for my report, but I think it does come under good news. Two days ago, I had a visit from one of our police officers in town who had helped me obtain some information. And he asked me to call the lieutenant, and I was told that we are having interviews for the new resource officer for the public schools. This coming Monday, interviews will be held with the hope of appointing somebody before school gets started. So that on Monday at approximately 1:00, the chief of police, as well as one of the lieutenant, will be in my office with Mr. Palladino and myself doing interviews. So, I think that's good news, that we're gonna get that position reinstated.
So, can we include a member of this committee?
Absolutely.
I did have some dialogue with the chief, and so I'm glad you brought that up. I'd like to appoint Dr. Sylvia, if you will, to be part of the interview process.
What's the date on that?
Monday at 1:00.
Next Monday?
This coming Monday, yes. There was a quick timeline.
Great news.
That would be the 22nd? 22nd?
Yeah.
What time?
1:00, 1 to 3. Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Rabinevich?
It's only about, I'll say this is good news, some of the people that may watch at home who are students may not think so, but school will be opening. The first day of school for students in grade 1 through 12 will be the 31st of August. That is a Wednesday, and that is the first day of school. And I'm sure Mr. Tetra will mention about when the roots will be in the newspaper during his report.
I have 10 days left to do school shopping, then.
That's right.
Rhonda, anything?
No.
Dr. Sylvia?
No.
Jeff?
Not at this time.
Michelle?
No.
Minutes of the meeting for August 3rd. If there are no corrections to the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to accept them as reported.
I move.
What's the Swett?
I suspect my colleague has the same comment to make. I believe in the vote regarding Dr. Rabinevich's recommendations on the weight of the goals, it indicates that the dissenters were Mr. Fons and Mr. Swett. I think it was Mr. Fons and Mrs. Dugan who were the dissenters, because I recall voting for it. Do you concur with my?
I do.
My memory? I do. Yes.
You can change your vote.
No change of vote.
I'm joking.
Now, we'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes with the correction.
I move that we accept the minutes as corrected.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All unanimous. Next, with the permission of this committee, I'd like to step out of order and take the report of the chair next, and then we'll follow with Mrs. Rotella's school programs. Any objections for that?
No.
No.
Okay, first of all, I'll start off with a, this is a announcement I'm making tonight, and also I have a copy of a press release. The subject is "My resignation from the chairman position of the school committee effective Thursday, September 1st, 2011." And I'll read what's gonna be the press release. "After consultation with my family, my doctor, my colleagues on the school committee, it is with deep regret that effective September 1st, I will resign from the position of chairman of the Wareham School Committee. I have been type 1 diabetic for over 35 years, and due to some medical issues and increased responsibilities at my regular job, I've decided, in the best interests of my health, my family, to eliminate some of my many activities and committees. I had given thought to resigning altogether from the committee. However, after talks with my committee members and family, I feel by stepping down from the chairmanship, I can relieve some of the stress and pressures currently upon me. I feel very strong that our committee is one that works great together. We are there for each other, and the committee could help me through some of these difficult times. I want to continue with, continue my term with confidence and faith that the voters of Wareham put in me when I was elected and then re-elected. I hope everyone accepts my privacy on the medical matters and understands that I will continue to be a valuable, valuable part of the Wareham School Department going forward." This will be a press release. And just a couple of comments on that. It was a tough decision, and to make matters even worse, as I found out today, that I'll be having my fourth rotator cuff surgery, so that's gonna put me up for about two months. And having a full-time job out of town, we're going through a merger at my company, so my services are required some nights till 6, 7 o'clock, and it's not fair to the committee, because as the chairman, you have a lot of responsibilities, meeting with the superintendent, et cetera. So I was very pleased that, after telling it to my colleagues, Mr. Swett, who is co-chair, is willing to step in and assume the position, and I'm happy to say that I'll still be part of the committee and still working hard for the best of the town and the children of Wareham. Thank you. The process on the evaluation of the superintendent, the committee members received just a summary of how we're going to do this. Today was the time that all the committee members turned in the evaluations for Dr. Rabinevich. I will then take all those evaluations, go through them, and total them up. On August 27th, I believe that's the date, two weeks from today, August 27th?
31st.
Is it 31st? August 31st, thank you. Under my report, I will do the evaluation of the superintendent and just report out on the total score, which is the score of all five committee members divided by five, come out with a weighted average, and see where the superintendent falls into that bracket, whether he is entitled to a pay increase or not. It'll depend on how the total comes out. After that, each committee member will have the opportunity, if they so desire, to comment on anything that they stated in their evaluation. And then following that, just like under the new open meeting law, all of that information becomes public information, and anyone can go through the process of going through the superintendent's office, I believe, the next day after the meeting to get copies of the complete evaluation of all members. So, there's no discussion on it tonight. Tonight's process was just turning in the evaluations, which I now have in my possession. I believe next is the voting delegate for MASC. I had wrote down the name of Jeff Swett a couple of weeks ago, and I think it falls nicely into place, because most of the time, it's the chairman that is the voting delegate. I believe, do we need a motion on that to approve Jeff to that position?
No, you're still chairman, you can appoint him.
Mr. Swett, do you accept that position?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So, meetings going forward, you can report out to yourself as to the progress of what's Mass Teacher Evaluation Resolution Workshop. Mr. Swett, you provided a copy of the teacher evaluation resolution sponsored by the committee. Is that correct? Did you have anything to add to that?
Yes, but before I do, first I wanna say that I respect and understand your decision to step aside as chairman, but what's most important to me is that you're still gonna be a presence at this table. So, I appreciate the fact that that's a decision that you have made to stay with us, and we will look forward to your continued participation on the committee. Secondly, I, and I'll defer perhaps to others who are more familiar with this, while I am more than happy to step into the role, I really think it's up to the committee to make that decision for the committee. And so I think perhaps we need to think about that from a procedural protocol perspective when the time is appropriate, which I guess would be two weeks from tonight. So we'll have plenty of time to think about how we go about that, but I don't think we should take for granted that the committee is going to decide that I'm the right person for this, for this position. And with respect to the task force, with the resolution, for the citizens who are here and watching, several months ago, this committee approved a resolution regarding teacher evaluations to be taken to the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Resolution Committee. That happened. I was fortunate that I was able to be there for another reason, and was able to talk about the process by which we came to the conclusion that it was something that we wanted the entire, all committees in the Commonwealth to be aware of. They were very enthusiastic, but they felt it was just a little bit too specific in the sense that it talked about mandated state, that the state would be mandating certain things, and that there'd be a certain percentage of the time that the instructional leaders and department heads would be doing things. And so, because there was such unanimous support for the concept, I offered, perhaps somewhat presumptiously, because it was a committee decision rather than an individual decision, that got the resolution that far, I offered to rewrite it to make it slightly less prescriptive. And then that was presented to the Board of Directors of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and once again, it was also passed unanimously. So they passed it unanimously in the Resolutions Committee with the understanding that it would be slightly modified, and then they passed the revised version unanimously at the actual Board of Directors level. So, if you look at the current version, which you should have a copy of in your packet, what you see is the fact that the only thing that really changed was, let's see, I'm looking at the old version. The old version talked about mandated, the state mandating things, and 50 percent. The new version, which I'm looking at now, the part in italics underneath, "Now therefore be it resolved that mask supports." The language is very similar, it's just a little bit more general. It talks about still instructional leaders and department heads with responsibility for a certain, for an appropriate number of teachers, rather than a specific number of teachers. And it talks about spending a portion of their time in the classroom and the remaining time devoted to instructional leadership, et cetera. But the essence of the resolution has not in any way, shape, or form been changed. So, this is what was passed, and this is what will show up in the Delegate Assembly manual, which as a result of this committee's vote, I will be there to defend for the school committee. Does anybody have any questions about the process? And I hope nobody is uncomfortable with it.
Jeff, I appreciate all your work. Through you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all your work, but I do think it requires a vote of this committee, this new resolution, just to have it on the record.
I appreciate that, and I'm not surprised to hear you say that.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
What happens after this, once it's passed? What does each individual committee then do with it? Do they create?
Nothing. It's safe to say, the force of this is simply to create a conversation within mask and to get them to be talking about it at the Board of Directors level to the legislative members with whom they have contacts, the executive branch with whom they have contacts. It gets the conversation going in two respects. One is that there's a management issue associated with this, these evaluation regulations that they seem to have failed to consider, and everybody seems to be in agreement with that. In other words, it's one thing to pass regulations saying we're gonna have all these wonderful evaluation templates and tools, et cetera, and it's another thing to have people actually capable of having the time to do it. And then there's a funding issue, which is if you have these people, we sacrificed in order to have these positions, but once again, finding the money to support these positions is not a trivial matter, and so that's another part of the conversation with both the executive and the legislative branch. So, really, it gets the conversation going. Beyond that, it has no force of anything other than the moral persuasion of the person having the conversation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would a motion be appropriate now, or would you would like to wait until other business?
No, we can make that, we can make that motion now.
I move that committee accept officially the revised version of the teacher evaluation resolution submitted to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All abstentions?
I wanna thank Dr. Sylvia for that. There was literally, there were literally a few days in between the Resolutions Committee, maybe it was a week at most, and it just, there was just no time to go through that process. That's all for me, Mr. Chairman.
It doesn't substantially change the intent of the resolution. So, you know, it's, I think it's a clear case of creeping before you crawl, and crawling before you walk, and walking before you run. So, I don't have a problem with that.
Good. That concludes my report. Now, we can go back to our agenda to item number four, report on the 2011 summer school programs. Mrs. Rotella, welcome.
Before I actually give the report, and during my report, I'm going to set up a looping slideshow. This has been prepared by Jane von Duhlis, who is the coordinator of our care program. And when it started, she thought you'd like to take a look at what went on their final day and their culminating activity. This was the care exposition. And we'll just let that run behind me, but I guess we could still keep the lights on. I'm not sure.
Did somebody hit the lights?
We didn't shut it off, it did it by itself.
No, it just happens.
It's actually better.
I do wanna, some of the pictures and slides you'll see, and as I said, there's, it's looping, there's 42 different slides and pictures of activities of not only the final day of expanded care, but also the various activities and events that occurred during the six weeks of the summer program. This was one of only four programs funded in the state to have a camp-type summer program that targeted or prioritized learning opportunities for students at risk, which, I will pause. Do you want me to continue, or, all right?
We'll worry about the lights later.
You've all received the report about the summer programs. As you read, there were concurrent programs that were, went on. There were a total of nine programs that continued all summer long at various periods of time. The key to this, in addition to having excellent coordinators of each of these programs, was the fact that they were coordinated programs. Wareham has established a reputation with the Department of Education that we make the best use of grant funds, we collaborate in leadership and coordination, and as a result, we're able to offer more opportunities to our students. Because of that, we receive additional funds, and I think the very successful expanded care program this summer is a witness and demonstration to that, that one of the reasons that we were chosen as one of four sites across the Commonwealth was because we do coordinate and collaborate in our summer programs. The goals of all summer programs are to provide additional learning opportunities for students at risk, students who have demonstrated learning performance needs, both regular ed and special education. The programs are prioritized for participation for students who have not demonstrated academic proficiency on both the MCAS tests as well as other achievement tests. The use of grant funds allow us to expand these opportunities to all students regardless of their ability to pay or income level. And then, once the students at risk who choose to enroll are enrolled, then participation is open to all students as long as grant funds permit. The one exception to these programs that was not totally free, where there wasn't a tuition attached, was the fifth quarter summer school program at the high school coordinated by Mr. Flynn. Students who needed to could apply for scholarships or work-study. We actually had a number of work-study students at the high school this summer, and they, through this fifth quarter, were able to complete coursework that they had not been successful with during the school year, but not to wipe the slate clean. We adopted this new format, this new organization about, this is the third year, where the students work during the school year counts as four fifths of their grade. Then the teachers get reports, including grade reports and any other insight from the school year teachers, to design projects for the students that target standards in which they have not demonstrated proficiency. The students must complete these projects at an 80 percent level or better in order to have the average of five quarters come up to a passing grade. And I think that it is highly significant, and I'm sure you read in Mr. Flynn's report, that there was a 91 percent success rate in which students passed their classes with a higher standard, with these higher standards for grading. Other years, they could get a 70 on the project, so we really upped the ante, if you will, this year. All of the details of all nine programs are here, including our extended school year special education program, and that is coordinated by Ms. Karen Rightnow, with a lot of support from Ms. Stacy Rogers, the special ed supervisor, and Mr. Lazzan. The other programs are all coordinated through my office, and I have to tell you that there is no way, with other responsibilities, that I could operate even eight programs without outstanding coordinators. And they are outstanding, and they work together amazingly well, so that students who need one thing in one program, for example, in the literacy lab where our second and third graders were, but they also could participate in the afternoon of the care program did. So, things overlapped and worked together, and it was highly successful. At one point this summer, there were over 500 students on the campuses between the middle school and the high school. So, I think it says a lot for our students and our community that we're able to offer this. And it's not quite year-round school, but it's school done differently in the summer. I'm not gonna go through all the details of the report, there's lots of highlights here, but rather than take up time in me choosing the highlights, I, with the permission of the chair, I'm open to your questions, comments, and I'll answer everything that I can.
Rhonda, anything?
Can I just ask the SPED program, there are several programs that went down in enrollment. Can you explain why? I mean, the care program I know exploded because there was additional funding that went into that, but the programs that went down in enrollment, can you kinda highlight some of the reasons why?
Well, the students that I'm aware of, it was because they enrolled in the care program. At the very last minute, the state offered us additional funds to provide additional special education support in the summer care program. So I know that caused some of the students, but beyond that, I defer to Mr. Lazzan.
I would just say, the process of students being selected for extended school year is
based on the team process, the IEP team process, and the barometer, if you will, of a student being eligible for extended school year services is if they evidence substantial regression when there's an absence of service. So, a good example of that, although necessarily an educational example, is that if a student has a physical handicap and they don't get therapy during the summer, and they come back physically in more shape than they were in when they left, that's substantial regression. So, the umbrella is very different for selection of students for summer program. But I absolutely agree with Mrs. Rotella that there were a number of students who elected the care program.
That's, I think we're like, the care program.
Okay, so the, so the extended school year SPED program?
Because we've got extra money.
And, what was the other one I went and talked to? Yeah?
Income-eligible is different, that's not a special education program, that's a program by which we receive, we essentially have vendors for the kind of early education care, and we were awarded grants, two grants actually, to allow income-eligible students to participate in the summer programs, and it's the first time that we've offered it.
Okay. And for the income-eligible, I actually got a chance to run into Ms. Morgan at the library for the transitional kindergarten.
She was everywhere this summer.
She was all over the place this summer, but I've been, you know, talking back and forth with her over the summer, and we were talking about the program, the new program. Have you already identified changes that you wanna make to that program for next year? I mean, are we gonna be able to open it, do it again next year? Cause, I mean, being able to?
We're awarded the grant, we will.
Okay.
There, again, there were two, there was the kindergarten entry enrichment program.
Yeah.
That was a separate award, still based on income eligibility. The income-eligible program is really a six-year award that we've gotten through on early education care. So we can, we can run that year-round, and we have up to 20 slots available for that program. So that portion of it, I can tell you, yes, the kindergarten entry enrichment will be competitive with grants and kind of other that's posted in next year.
And for the students that are coming in, I mean, for both the kindergarten entry enrichment program, as well as the income-eligible preschool, what kinda challenges are you seeing with, or that might be a negative way to put it, but are you seeing any, no, I'll just say challenges, with the students that are coming into that program? Are there any changes that you wanna make for next year if we are awarded the grant? Based on what, I mean, again, it's a new program, so?
Right. I think because it's a self-funded program, probably one of the biggest challenges are age span and basis of need. So, we were able to, between, we were kinda able to blend the two programs so that we have staffing. I think what we would like to be able to see are more activities for those kids, so that they can be out and about doing some of the, that's the age appropriate for that group, and they're very young children. But, the difference between three years of age and entering the RDA, five or six years, developmentally, there's a very broad span. So if we could have a younger program, an older program, and also have more activities... then I think that those would be the...
And it was held at East?
No, it was held at middle school.
At the middle school. That's right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Sylvia?
And I just got a couple of clarification questions, only because I probably should know more about this than I should.
That's okay.
On the literacy lab.
Yes.
I was a little confused on the description because at the top line it says grades two and three, and then in the description it says fifth graders. I didn't quite understand that. And the other thing I didn't quite understand was the increase in numbers and the reduction in days. It went from thirty-one to forty-nine, but from twenty to sixteen days. So there was a little ambiguity as far as that description, so maybe you could clarify upon it.
I'd be happy to. Actually, we went, the years are in reverse of the way I would read it, but it went down from forty-nine last year in 2010 to thirty-one this year. The main reason for the reduction in numbers...
Okay. All right, yeah, all right. I read it wrong. You're absolutely right.
But...
I'm sorry.
That's okay. The grant was changed in that because of the new DSAC regional organization system that the Department of Education has implemented, all of our grants have to also have to be approved by the DSAC, the Regional District Director, as well as the Department of Ed. And the particular grants and academic support where we have used in the past for the literacy lab were, this year, targeted to do professional development. I pleaded the case that professional development without application was only half of the product or half-baked, and said with our students in need and with especially reading and struggling readers, it was essential that we let teachers who were going through professional development then practice their newfound strategies or their re-honed skills in a literacy lab. So we were allowed to do that, but it was limited to students currently in third grade and students going into third grade because of the director's particular focus. The at-risk fifth-grade students, and it isn't well explained there, and I apologize for not picking up on this in advance, we had an additional program through CARE for struggling fifth graders who were coming into the middle school, and there was anxiety associated with that.
So that had nothing to do with the literacy lab?
No, they were actually used as tutors for the younger students in the literacy labs, and that's what was omitted.
Okay.
So they got, they got to feel good about themselves.
I didn't quite understand that. You know, I just think that one of the problems that we've discussed over and over again is early intervention and readiness.
Absolutely.
At the very young elementary stage. So I just think that it's unfortunate, as you pointed out to me, because I misread it, that the numbers went down because I still think the need has not gone down. I think if anything, the need has gone up. And I would offer the same argument to the Wareham Cooperative School Summer School that even though the numbers went up, I know that we've got, based on MCAS reporting, a heck of a lot more than fifteen kids that are at risk in terms of language arts. So that is kind of disheartening to me. If, I would think that we could accommodate more kids. Even with one or two staff, per pupil, you could accommodate, you know, much more than fifteen kids.
Absolutely.
So it's disheartening to me to see the MCAS results and the numbers that should be bulging at the seams being marginal at best. So just a comment on that.
I appreciate the comment, and I think, you know, the committee and the superintendent have been very generous in this year in letting me come before you and talk about the programs that were planned back in April and May, and then throughout the summer. We've done news releases and so forth to build participation. There's two different issues that we confront. With the younger children in the literacy lab, there are many parents, and we did personal calls, I mean, we had multiple people on phone.
That's the best recruiting tool, by the way.
Pardon?
Personal calls.
That's...
That's the best recruiting tool.
Absolutely. You would think so.
Yeah.
But it was not, it did not produce the results we had hoped, and the most frequent comment was, "My kids need time off in the summer." There were a number of students who did not participate in the literacy lab because their parents opted for CARE. So they did get some academic support through CARE, but the intensive reading strategies that they really needed, I would say they did not get.
All I'm very concerned about at the elementary level, and I just think that we probably, and I'm just saying this generally, we probably have to do a better job of communicating to the parents how important literacy skills are to these young kids, especially at their early ages. And likewise, at the middle school, we look at the MCAS results.
Absolutely.
And we know, we know who the at-risk students are in terms of literacy skills, and yet we only had fifteen kids sign up for this program. So that's troubling to me because we know who they are, we have their phone numbers. You know, I just think that we really need to do more to educate the parents on how important this is. You know, having time off is not good enough for me.
I agree.
You know, I think if we don't step up everyone's responsibilities on this, school department, administrative, school committee, parents, and the entire community about the importance of both mathematical and English and language arts literacy, that, you know, we're just going to continue to struggle. So I think that when we get them young, that's the most important thing. And these summer programs are just an unbelievably focused opportunity to do that. So, you know, I'm really happy that we have it, and I'm happy it was successful for those that did, but I guess my only comment is, I feel a little disheartened that it didn't go further.
I would agree with you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Is it fair to say that the fifth quarter program is the only program that has this academic accountability? Because it's the only program that you seem to reference progress made, seventy-seven percent, all that kind of stuff?
It, the accountability of the literacy lab is not to the same degree because they're not earning credit, and I think Mr. Flynn was obviously and suitably quite proud of the accomplishments. So it is there. Under the literacy lab, we hesitate to report on improvement with only a four- or five-week program. What we do is follow these students who participated in the literacy lab in the school year ahead. And I'd be happy to come back and share those results later on. So it's a long-term effect that we look at for those students. Neither the CARE program or any of the other transition programs have that same level of accountability as far as academic connections, although we do follow them, and this year we intend to follow the CARE students even more closely than we have in the past in their school year programs. The summer success program, we had a new coordinator this year, and she will, I meet with all of the coordinators again in September, and I will have updated reports from her at that time as far as how those students, because those were definitely at-risk students who were involved in both the fifth quarter program and the summer success for additional support. The summer middle school program was different this year in that it is the only one of the programs you see before you that was not grant-funded. It was a program organized by Mr. Gilmore for middle school students who had failed one or more subjects and coordinated by Mrs. LaSorsa, one of his teachers. The report on that is, remains to be seen.
But there wasn't the accountability that Mr. Flynn had?
Mrs. LaSorsa reported to Mr. Gilmore directly.
I would say that you are correct.
Okay.
Just to answer it.
And I'd like to bore down into a little bit Mr. Flynn's indication of improvement. Is it fair to say that the courses that these students were taking were courses with which they already had some familiarity?
They were all courses they had taken during the school year but had not passed.
Exactly. So when they are doing a pre-test, they're doing a pre-test of a student who has already taken the course?
Yes, but they're pre-testing them on the standards which they did not demonstrate proficiency.
Oh, I understand that.
Okay.
So they've had a course.
Yes.
Full year, half a year, whatever. They've had a course, they're now being pre-tested on something they've already studied, and they come up with a baseline, if you will, to judge the improvement. And then they get an average of seventy-seven percent on the post-test. Is that accurate?
That's the average of all the students together.
Yes.
That's not any one student.
Well, I understand.
Yeah, okay.
That's the average.
Yes.
Which, with simple math, means that if the, if we use the fourteen percent, that means their pre-test number was sixty-seven.
I would have to...
Because that's simply, simply seventy-seven divided by one point one-four.
I would have to check his mathematics because in order to be in the summer school and have to take the course, they would have scored below sixty.
I'm just using the numbers you provided.
I understand.
So to me, to take a student who has already had the course, gets a pre-test after taking the course of sixty-seven and bringing them to seventy-seven, I must say, I like improvement, but I'm still not impressed.
Well, but again, you're, we're looking at composite averages. I'd rather look at individual students and see what we're looking at because a composite average takes into account the kids who did nothing.
Kids who did nothing.
We had ninety-one percent succeed. We had nine percent who did not.
What's the definition of success?
Eighty percent or better on the final project.
So maybe then, rather than reporting out averages, maybe medians would be a better number?
I would agree.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? No, thank you. So Lazzan, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just in regards to monitoring progress, the extended school year is based on, there are objectives that are developed by the team and that's part of the IEP process, so there is a measure for those kids that are in extended school year.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just so I understand, what percentage of these hundred-and-seventy students were on IEPs?
In the extended school year program?
Well, the...
No.
No, the fifth quarter.
No.
I'm talking about the fifth quarter. When you were running through the question of, which of the programs have some sort of...
Oh, sorry, you were going, yes.
I just wanted to clarify that extended school year, the mechanism is the IEP and the objectives in the IEP.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you.
Nice job, Mrs. Vitello. One question, in the middle school program, all of them seem pretty consistent. That one was reduced from three and a half hours a day to three. Was that made up by going to six weeks? What was the thinking behind that?
I think the thinking behind it, and I, as I said, Ms. Gilmore was the direct supervisor of that with Ms. LaSorsa being the coordinator. I believe it was a scheduling purpose that he did so that then the students who wanted to stay, go to lunch, could go to CARE afterwards. It was a enticement, if you will, to participate.
So it was not any type of funding issue that they had to be cutbacks in that?
No. No.
Any other questions from the committee? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Tetro will be making his way to the states. We've asked for a report from the Transportation Department, and even though school is off for the summer, it's always a concern of the safety, what do the buses look like? So I talked to Dr. Rabinevich, and we felt it was a great idea to have Mr. Tetro in and just give us an update and let the parents know what to expect as we prepare for school in two weeks. You have the floor, sir?
Well, I prepared a year-in-review, if you want to review that. I think you guys have that. We did run twenty-two vehicles, though, over the summer, so we have not been standing idle all this time. But we have had a successful year. We have increased our inspection numbers. We've maintained our staffing level. We've increased the efficiency in the garage. And we did have some budget challenges, which we can review later on. As far as the actual Transportation Department itself, just a few facts. We transport nearly thirty-five hundred students every single day safely to and from school, wherever that school may be, whether in town or out of town. We approximately, we travel approximately a hundred and sixty thousand miles on our vehicles every single year. And we do that in town with twenty-four large buses, nine sped or shorter special-needs-equipped vehicles, and out of town, anywhere between nine and twelve vehicles, depending on what the population may be that we have to transport. Last year, we talked about the out-of-district. We transported sixty-four students out of district for a special school, whatever the case may be, an IEP or a special needs school. And of those, forty-three were homeless. So we were taxed somewhat, but everything was accomplished that we needed to get done. I do anticipate having the same number of in-town vehicles to transport our students this year. We did, we were able to get a special-needs, full-size vehicle for our wheelchair-bound students that go to the Swart Center every single day. And I think we're going to, you're going to see a lot of excitement, I hope, about that acquisition. As far as our garage numbers go, we have improved. We continue to improve. There is, we have some ideas going forward of how, what we can do over the next year to continue our steady progress with the improvement in the garage. And that would include staffing, organization, and just some continued computer updates and inventory controls that we're going to be putting into place. We were able to get our two full-time technicians ASE certified in some specific school bus areas, and those will continue. But they, both of them have done that over the past year. Our staffing, we're currently where we need to be. We certainly may have some openings that we may need to fill, but right now, for the start of school, we have everything that we need covered with bodies that can spare when necessary. The budget numbers, as I mentioned, we did go over, but we did have a number of reasons why. We had to make up fifty thousand dollars or so from the previous year's budget for mandated repairs, and that was done. We had an increase in our vehicle, vehicle repairs for inspection to ensure and guarantee the safety of all of our vehicles on the road. We also had an increase of the non-revenue generating out-of-district students. They're our responsibility, and we happily transported them, but that does come at a cost, which in some cases meant a vehicle, a driver, and a monitor. I anticipate the purchase of this new vehicle to dramatically decrease our expenses for out-of-district students. You can see that we have acquired a new seventy van. We've also, as I mentioned, got that wheelchair, full-size vehicle for the Swart Center. You know, we continue to make sure our buses are safe at all times. We do have an aging fleet of vehicles. That's not a secret. You can see the graph there of the, of any vehicle that, between August and August, we spent more than three thousand dollars to fix. So you can see what we're kind of looking at to ensure that these vehicles are ready to go every day to service our students. So that did come at a cost. I do recommend strongly that we continue to look at ways to acquire new school buses for the students of Wareham. My personal recommendation is that we somehow lease about twenty vehicles. Before I get into the back-to-school information, is there any questions on those topics?
I would say, continue through, and then I'll go through the committee. I would say, continue through, and then I'll go through the committee for questions.
Okay. School does start two weeks from today. Our goal is to have all of the routes, all the regular education routes that are normally published in the paper, published one week from today on August twenty-fourth. That would also be the day that we intend to put them on the Wareham Public Schools website. So, that is when all the routes in-town, regular education routes will be available. And then, of course, we'll take any concerns via phone or email as if we miss something, which that happens, and we'll correct it. Just some notes to any parents or students. Don't, please try not to be tardy for the bus. Be prepared. Get out to the bus stop five to ten minutes before your bus arrives. This prevents rushing, prevents any unforeseen accidents, whether it be someone slipping or anything that might happen. Please be ready for the bus. Make sure you stay ten giant steps away from the bus stop when the bus is pulling up. Bus drivers are going to review safety protocols with all their buses during the first weeks of school, and then they get reviewed monthly. And certainly, they get reviewed during our school bus evacuations for School Bus Safety Week in October. But make sure you listen to the bus driver and follow all protocols. Wait for the bus to stop completely before you come up to the bus or leave the bus. Before you approach the bus, make sure the red lights are activated. And if you're crossing, please wait for the bus driver to signal for you to cross the street that it's safely. Always sit properly on the bus. Don't horseplay, shout, yell, throw anything on the vehicles. Our drivers have an important responsibility, and we don't like them distracted. So, please behave yourselves on the school bus. Stay away from the bus wheels at all times. If you should drop something, please let the driver know. Don't ever, ever go underneath a school bus for any reason. Keep your hands and heads and feet and backpacks and everything else inside of the school bus. Don't ever throw anything out or reach your hands out. Wait for the bus to stop before getting out of your seat to get off of it. And always be aware of what your surroundings are anytime you're around a school bus. We really promote the safety of all the children in Wareham at the Transportation Department. That is our number-one responsibility, and we take it seriously. And one thing that's come up recently is with the increase in mobile technology, iPods, cell phones, Angry Birds, whatever it is that you do on your phones. You need to pay attention when the bus is approaching. We hear about unfortunate accidents where students just weren't paying attention or didn't hear a vehicle approaching. So, please, try to, at the bus stop, make sure that you know and are aware of your surroundings so nothing happens. And we anxiously await August thirty-first, and we'll have a successful startup.
I'll start with Jeff.
The number thirty-five-hundred grabbed me because it's roughly twenty percent more than the district has students. Are you really handling about five hundred students from out-of-district on a daily basis?
That number, it's a little bit less, it's obviously approximate, but that number comes out of every student that has entered into our Versatrans program, which is generated through Power School. So, that does include seniors who may not be on the bus, but we need to make sure that there's a spot available for them. That's where that number comes from, directly out of our-
But seniors are counted in our population, which is close to roughly three thousand, maybe a little bit more, declining slightly. How do you get to thirty-five-hundred?
That's what the number that's generated through the routing program. Does that mean, are you including the preschools and the out-of-districts? I mean, no, they're probably not five hundred, but-
Well, no, I'm not including, well, yes, Dr. Ravinovich, how do we get to thirty-five-hundred?
Having, thank you. Having analyzed this before, Versatrans, there's not a direct linkage between Power School and Versatrans. So, once a child is added, even if they leave the district, they're still in Versatrans unless somebody remembers to send the piece of paper to the Transportation Department. And they do, but not always in a timely fashion. And between the end of the year and the beginning of the year, the numbers that will be in Versatrans will actually be larger. It surprises me that it's close to three hundred to four hundred larger. And some of that can be the students going to Upper Cape. You know, there's sixty, seventy children that go there. But that's why, once school starts, the drivers do counts on their buses, and they have lists, and they actually check the names that are on the routes.
But Mr. Tetro does not transport children to Upper Cape?
No, but they were in, as eighth graders, they're in Power School, and they were transported to school.
Okay. So, what I'm hearing is, there's a data integrity problem. I'm not saying you don't have a big job. Whether it's thirty-one-hundred or thirty-five-hundred, it's a big job. But I think that the number of thirty-five-hundred needs to be cleaned up, shall we say.
At the time I pulled this, for this information, that was the number that came up. We've since corrected twelve hundred errors. You know, there is an overlap period, so perhaps when you ask me again in September, that number will be down. But, you know, between the rollover, the increase in the kindergarten students have to be hand-punched, that's the number that came up. And like I said, we did correct some errors, so.
And by the way, I'm not suggesting that should be your highest priority. It just jumped out at me. When I look at the list of the inspections, if I see a not applicable, N/A, N slash A, can I assume that that means that the bus has been taken out of service?
It means it wasn't inspected for that round. Some of these vehicles had major repairs that had to be done, and they're being done now. So, it was temporarily taken out of service, I guess would be the answer to your question.
Temporarily taken out of service, okay. You've offered three data points, if you will, from August through April. Once again, without suggesting that this is, you have a monumental problem of trying to keep these buses on the road and safely. But I don't see with thirty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-nine, anything compelling in terms of a trend and an improvement trend. Am I missing something?
With the information I have prior to my arrival here, there is an improvement. These three data points represent the three inspections that I have been employed here, and nothing prior, and nothing after.
So, you're saying an average of twenty-nine since you've been employed? And I'm not asking this with knowledge to the contrary, is a significant improvement before you were employed? Is that what you're saying? Because these three data points don't suggest improvement.
Correct. Prior to my employment here, based on the information I have available, there's been an increase in the percentage. And there's been an increase, you know, from my first one to the second one, and then a decrease in the third one as well. So, it's been ten percent since I've been here.
Once again, without being critical, it looks like something close to thirty percent failure rate at the time of inspection, recognizing that some of these failures are trivial and are literally corrected within minutes or an hour or two of the failure. That's sort of, unless you get a modernized fleet, that's what you and your mechanics and the drivers are going to be living with. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Is there any way to distinguish, I know there is a way, but in future reports, if we could distinguish between major failures and minor failures, I think that would be helpful. Because a number of about, a number of about thirty percent is a distressing number. Even though I know you don't put a bus on the road that isn't safe, I think it would help me, at least, feel that much more comfortable if there was something that segregated major and minor. Because I know most of them are minor. And finally, you made a comment about, and you used the term leasing. Why is it that you think leasing, as compared to purchasing, is the right way to go for the department?
I feel it's more cost-effective, and you can continue to turn around the vehicles, and you have a fixed cost.
Well, you do have a fixed cost, but I'm not sure, I certainly, as a school committee member, is not going to hold you accountable for the best way to finance the modernization of your fleet. And depending on the situation, hopefully, someone like a John Foster will make recommendations to the Capital Planning Committee, et cetera, et cetera. And how did you come up with the number of twenty?
Based on the ages of our current vehicles, knowing what it costs, I feel that's the number of vehicles we need to get. Number of full-size vehicles that we need to get to.
If you got twenty, do you have any feel for what would happen to the failure rate?
We would have less failures. I feel it would increase by at least fifteen percent. The pass rate would increase by at least fifteen percent. So, we'd have a fifteen percent decrease in the failure rating. We are never going to have a one-hundred percent pass rate.
I am very pleased with the quality of this report. I thank the chairman and the superintendent for making it happen, and I thank you for providing us to the committee. Thank you.
Rhonda? Do you have anything?
I do. Going over by a hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars, I don't know if this is a question for you or for the superintendent, but leading, did we expect that cost with the new? Because I know, I have been taking a look in, you know, the transfers that have happened to cover the hundred-and-eighty-two. But was that an unforeseen cost going into last year's budget cycle?
We knew we were underfunded by the money that was appropriated. Our budget was cut in at least twenty-five thousand, if not maybe forty thousand. And on top of that, we had the additional expense of the, about sixty thousand from the steel rails that we had to put on. And the cost of gasoline and labor went up, so.
And so, I think you know where I'm going. Going into next year, are we going to see similar, or do you feel that we're appropriately funded?
I do not believe that we are perfectly funded. But I believe that the deficit will be less because we don't owe sixty thousand dollars for steel rails, first of all. We just purchased a ninety thousand dollar vehicle. That means that the Schwartz Run that cost us a hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars to run will be doing ourselves for the cost of the gas, the cost of the driver. So, you know, let's say it's fifty thousand dollars. That's an eighty thousand dollar turnaround because of the investment in that vehicle. Now, I understand, from a business perspective, if we take the ninety thousand, we do it over seven years and depreciate it, that wouldn't really be as big of a savings. But immediately, it means that my deficit in that account will be less. Now, if we were appropriately funded and we had no deficit in that account, then I wouldn't have had to use the hundred-and-eighty thousand from the revolving accounts to make it up, and we would have a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars to put towards new vehicles.
For the, and, sorry, I'm just going to, one more question through the chair to the Is there any, I'll call it chatter, is there, are there any discussions at the state level from districts across the Commonwealth about sped transportation and the reimbursement or lack thereof of reimbursing towns for sped? Is there any conversations at all going on at state level about how they're suffocating towns with not correctly reimbursing for sped transportation?
There is conversations being held about the reimbursement through Circuit Breaker of transportation. But I must remind the committee that the state, in order to handle its own fiscal woes, was reimbursing us on Circuit Breaker. And it's a complicated formula, but I'll give you the simplistic, that after we spent thirty-six thousand dollars, every dollar after that, by statute, we should have received seventy-two percent of that money back to us. But because the state had budget woes, they cut our reimbursement down to forty percent. So, the likelihood of us getting transportation funded as part of Circuit Breaker, I'm not quite sure that we're going to see that in the foreseeable future. It's another unfunded mandate. Sorry.
So, I was, so, the next question that I have is, I know that we all met months ago. There was a group that met in your office, Dr. Ravinovich, again, through you, Mr. Chair, that spoke about the different options of bus replacement. You came in, you gave us a report, you basically said, this is my recommendation, this is what we need to do. And one of them was for conversation to continue with capital planning as well as with the town administrator. Through you, Mr. Chair, could I have any update on those two, on the conversations there, or what you've heard, what the latest is?
Thank you for asking. As of yesterday, the town administrator came down to my office and said that he was well-aware of our need for vehicles, and that he wanted to make sure that I had the bid document ready for the leasing of vehicles that Mr. Tetro had put together and had shared with the town administrator. After that meeting, Mr. Tetro and I met with the town administrator and gave him options of how these vehicles could be leased through a bid process. And I really don't have the specifics of how the funding will occur, but I, because I sent an email saying I've got something that if anything is going to go on to the town warrant, it needs to be printed by, I believe it's September second. So, I asked the town administrator what we needed to do to get on to the warrant with an article. And that's when he came down to visit me, and I'm expecting to hear from him again.
Okay. I feel that it's important that we keep bus replacement front and center. Because I, you know, we had that meeting, and I know that I should have been one of the people saying this on a weekly basis. But it's important that we keep bus replacement front and center and out there, and the importance of it on a weekly basis. Because this is, it's not going to get better, it's only going to get worse. And I know that there's different ideas and options, but to have a meeting several months ago and then kind of go silent, and then now hearing the report, and need's still there. Every single week, I think we need to figure out as a committee what to do, you as our superintendent, as transportation director, how we can get the message out about the importance of bus replacement out there as much as possible. Go ahead, if you want to respond. Through you.
I do believe that the town administrator understands the need. I do believe that various committees, the Capital Planning Committee in particular, understands the need and has been working towards keeping our replacement of vehicles near the top of the list of capital appropriations that need to occur. But the funds need to come through the town. And so, the town has to come up with a plan of how to fund it, and that I can't tell the town administrator how to fund it. So, I am continuing my conversations. I have been led to believe that this will occur, and at this point, I have to trust that it will occur. And I- And I will keep you in the loop.
Okay, thanks. The, through you, Mr. Chair, the A, the monitor and the A's, can you just explain real quick what their responsibilities are when riding the bus?
We have some students in town who, you know, have an individual education plan that require that someone be with them while they're transported to or from school.
Okay, and that, where does that, where does the funding for that come from? It's in the transportation part, it's not through?
No, it's through the transportation department.
Okay. I saw in the report the staff, but how many volunteers are currently, how many volunteer bus drivers do you have? I know we have one at this table, but.
We currently have one.
Can we get more of them?
We know some are retired.
Let me ask, would, do you need more volunteers?
In what capacity?
Okay, I just wanted to ask that if, you know, to be volunteer bus drivers. I mean, I know that you are appropriately.
If there was a licensed, fully licensed certified school bus driver who was willing to come and drive a school bus for free, I certainly think that person would be looked at for help.
Okay, thank you. The last question that I have is that you went through a list of, a list of, not rules, but sort of rules for children and parents when getting on and off the bus. Is that part of the student handbook that each parent gets a copy of and in some cases, or most cases, they sign it, correct?
Yes, it is part of the elementary, Mr. Chair, it is part of the elementary student handbook. There is the bus code and discipline code for the bus included in that handbook.
And through you, Mr. Chair, to the superintendent, just the elementary schools?
It probably is in the addendum for secondary schools as well. I'm just familiar with the elementary one right off the top of my head.
This is just kind of my general.
It's a good list, though.
You know, list.
And if so, it should be, there should be some sort of accountability from parents and students that they know that it's part of the overall handbook, that it's expected and that, I mean, that's what the student handbook is for, so.
I try to get this in the paper with our roots, just something, you know, for them to read over and remind them.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Sylvia?
Thank you, Jeff. I echo Jeff's comments on the report. I think it's comprehensive and much more than that, very eye-opening. And not that we didn't know what the problems were, but I think that this graphically points out some of the problems. You know, and even some of the newer buses, you can't always tell when they're going to take a powder or so. Because I see one here was 2005 Belth that you got $16,000 worth of repairs into. So, they don't necessarily have to be all that old, although 2005 is getting up there, but compared to some of the other ones. You know, I think that one of the graphics that's here, and again, I don't want to beat a dead horse, is the fact that, you know, you're looking at just, and just repairs on buses over $3,000, you're looking at about $70,000. And that's, you know, that could be, I'm sure, reduced significantly if our fleet was updated. So, I think that, please correct me if I'm wrong, anyone at the table or yourself. I sense, however, that there is a consensus in the town that this problem's got to be dealt with. I know that I was chair and this whole issue became, you know, somewhat controversial. But I sense that there is a consensus that the problem is recognized and that we've got various aspects of the community or community agencies or groups working on a solution. Am I correct in assuming that?
That's my perception, that all the parties that are required are working as quickly as they can through the process to remedy these problems. That is my perception.
You know, again, so maybe some good came out of all that chaos that we had last year. I think that a couple of things that you made in your report that I'd just like to have clarified, only for my, only for my sake. And I know I should know more about it and I apologize. But you made special reference about 43 kids that are homeless. What is the significance of that? Why is it in the report?
It's because they're out of town and it's just more to emphasize the.
I guess I don't understand still what the implications are there.
And if I'm wrong, correct me, but you have to, if a town writes an IEP for a student and for whatever circumstance, that student becomes homeless and the state assigns them to a homeless shelter in a different town, Fall River, New Bedford, South Yarmouth, Plymouth, wherever the town may be, because they have special needs and there is an IEP written for that student, we are still responsible for their transportation. Two, I think they get the option, they get the option of either to go to a different school where they live or come back to Wareham.
I guess that's the thing that I don't quite understand. I'm not going to belabor the meeting with the legal aspects of it.
Can I give you a clarification?
But if they're homeless, they have no hometown.
Dr. Sylvia.
Go ahead.
The McKinney-Vento.
I understand the McKinney-Vento Act.
McKinney-Vento federal legislation. If you become homeless, okay, and you were attending another school. So, I was living in Brockton, I was attending West Junior High. Now I become homeless, they put me in a shelter in Wareham. We now have the responsibility, if that child wants to go back to West Junior High in Brockton, of transporting that child to West Junior High and picking them up every day and bringing them back to Wareham. And we have to, we are responsible for 50 percent of the cost and then Brockton is responsible for 50 percent of the cost. And so those are the 43.
So that's why it's mentioned.
People that he talks about.
So it adds an additional burden on the expense of running the transportation.
And those vehicles and drivers and.
And so we have 40, so basically what we do, what you're saying is we have 43 kids that are declared homeless that somehow rather reside in Wareham that are going someplace else to go to school. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
When your drivers are, I know, we ask your drivers to do an awful lot. And, you know, really, and I don't want to jinx it, but we've got in terms of a safety record pretty, pretty good in terms of mishaps. I think that, to put another responsibility in the drivers would be, is not my intent. But do the drivers make an honest attempt to get the plate numbers of someone that violates the lights?
Yes, and there's.
Because I know it's almost impossible to do because they're watching kids, they're opening doors and so forth. But I tell you, we've got to send a loud message to the people that just don't even bother to stop for those red lights.
What happens, and this does happen, if a driver gets a plate or a parent gets a plate, if it happened at a bus stop, we have a form, a specific form to fill out that we can fax directly to the registry. And unfortunately, the registry, the police didn't see it, so they can't ticket that operator. However, they do send a letter stating that, you know, you were seen doing this. And I have seen those letters get sent to people, so, yes, we do take the time to fill out those forms when we do get the plates.
That's all. Thank you again for your evidence.
To Jeff, to follow up. Mr. Swayd and Dr. Sylvia, excellent report. All the details are in it. I just, on the failures, I agree with Jeff. I would like, next time this report comes out, to identify what those failures are because that's always a hot topic. I understand a failure could be a first aid kit that's not full or anything like that, but still like to see a little of that.
They typically provide those spreadsheets after the inspections.
Correct. This, your last report is April 11th. Today is August 17th. I assume we have updated information from this because the first thought from the public will say, I'm looking at schools starting in a couple of weeks and I see 13 failures. What is the status of that after this report?
We're currently in the middle of inspections. We're, they're ongoing. So I do not have completed numbers for this round of inspections.
As far as, and just for Rhonda's comment about volunteer drivers, that's nice, but keep in mind of the policy of the union workers. Better there before bringing in volunteer drivers. And the other thing that I echo Rhonda's comments is, I think her point that she wants to get across is that the meetings need to continue with capital planning, with the town administrator, superintendent, so that this doesn't fall on deaf ears. And your report clearly, as Dr. Sylvia stated, is an eye-opener when we look at $70,000 in repairs and buses that are 1992, you spent two grand, but a 2005, $16,000. Those problems aren't going to go away, so, again, nice report. Any other questions for Mr. Tetro?
Good luck with the opening.
Jeff was the first one we started with. Thank you very much.
Good luck with the opening.
Report of the superintendent.
Thank you. I apologize, I may have actually given you the wrong memo from the MCAS accountability, but I will, my intent, the memo that is in your package talks about when these, some of these things will be available and how principals and so forth can get to look at the data. The data is not available for the public and to the school board until the middle of September. Approximately sometime after September 15th, that data will be available. It's in its phase where principals can look at it and determine if there are errors and report back to the state and for those errors to be corrected. So they're cleaning up the data at this point and that's where we are with the MCAS at this particular point. So I wanted to kind of keep the committee in the loop of where we are with that and as soon as they become available, we'll have it with the committee.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I know you have this annual event with teachers regarding the MCAS where everybody gets, I think it took place in the middle school, everybody gets into this room and then breaks apart.
We have a day-to-day.
Do you have a date for that meeting yet?
October 7th?
October 7th?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Through you, through you.
Yes, go ahead.
To the superintendent. Am I wrong in assuming if someone, I guess I'm looking for clarity, that this is kind of late this year? Because didn't the individual student scores and standards, weren't they already available by this time? Middle or late August?
No.
No.
No?
No. Actually, we've had a preliminary, if I may. We had a preliminary results earlier this year than we've ever had to be able to use them in student placement, knowing they're preliminary. But the schools are allowed to examine and use them.
Right, I understand that, but the school, but the student, individual student data is out.
No, it is not. It is only preliminary and it is still a part of, the individual data will not be released to parents or public until.
That's not my question. My question is, the individual student data has been reported to the schools?
Yes.
Okay.
The preliminary data.
Right, well, but you know what, the preliminary data was probably 99 percent accurate anyways. You know, maybe 98. But it can be, my point is, we need that data as early as possible and it is out there in terms of placement, in terms of looking at the standards, in terms of doing a diagnostic based on those kids with a unique set of skill deficiencies.
Absolutely, and this year with the preliminary results, we've also been giving student growth incentive. So we're not looking at two different groups of third graders, for example. We can look at a child from third to fourth and be the same student.
Okay, that's what I need the clarity on. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, the next part was the DESI District and School Accountability Review. There is a letter dated July 8th in your package. And this is something that we went through approximately six years ago in this district. And it had a different name and, but it is a district review. It's an audit where the district is audited for everything. The curriculum is audited, the finances are audited, the, all of the procedures, student services. And it is a task, we had a visit from the gentleman who was running this from the state and the directors and I sat with him. We will be carving it up. It will be a major time-consuming. They are coming the first week in February. They wanted to come during October. I wrote them a letter and asked them to come later since we were doing INEAS accreditation review. And so they said that they would do that for us. There are a couple of ways that you can look at this. You can look at it as an imposition because there's a lot of time and effort will be taken from a lot of people. Interviews of school committee members, of teachers, of principals, of parents. And then they will come back and they will give us some data on how they feel we are doing according to the standards of school effectiveness and district effectiveness. I view that as a positive. It's another set of eyes coming in. And there will be, as I said, four or five people coming in and they will kind of give us a report card. They'll tell us how they think we're doing. And we can then use the results that we should get before the end of this year to help us plan for the following year. So I tend to look at it in the glass is half-full and we will do our best to make this as painless as possible and to work with the state. So, not that we had a choice. Mr. Chair, has somebody been asking you a question?
One of the things they said in the letter is that if we wanted to, we could have them come before the school committee, so then we can ask specific questions of them. Is that something that the, I know that I would definitely like that. I don't know if that's a possibility.
Absolutely, if, you know, with the chair's permission, you know, we'll look at the schedule of the meetings and try to find one before they come, sometime before they come to, you know, so the school committee is fresh on why they're coming and so forth. Plus, it will be an audience for the public to find out about them coming and so forth.
Make sure you pop shit ahead of time, so I'm not here.
The second question that I had for you, Mr. Chair, is, do they provide us with the data points of how they're going to evaluate us before they actually come in? Like, do you see the evaluation forms and?
I have a 100-page document with all of the points that they will be looking for.
Okay, so we're prepared, we understand how they're going to be.
We will be prepared.
All right. Third question through you, Mr. Chair, is, what kind of report do we get out of this? If anything, I mean, besides them just telling us how they feel about us, do we, are we able to?
We get a preliminary report that we then can read and we look for factual errors that we respond to. A period of time after we send that back to them, they put out a finalized report. EQA, for instance, which is the name of the one that they did before. The difference is that this is now part of the Department of Education. Before EQA, when they came and did the audit, was a separate branch of government that did the audit. It was not the Department of Education, even though there were educators that did it. And one of their, in my mind, large findings was that the town did not support education financially. Now, that may be a great finding to have, but I don't believe it's changed anything. And if we go to town meeting and we hear people talk sometimes at the microphone, you know, even though that finding is there, it hasn't changed anybody else's mind, so.
And it hasn't provided any more funds either.
That's correct.
Well, I mean, I think that if we get one or two. Right, well, I mean, I think that if we get one or two, you know, a, a handful of good points out of this, and I agree with you, it, it's good to have it. Um, I found it, the last thing, I found it interesting that they interview everybody except for students. Is there, it's one of the questions that I would like to ask them, if you're evaluating how a school system is teaching children, why don't you put them part of your interview, part of the interview process, is to have students in there also?
Continue, Dr. Rubenovic.
Oh, no, I have a question, I have a second question too, while on this. Um, I'm not as optimistic as my colleague here, I, I'm, I'm like the old Fogey, uh, been there, done it, and the thing that bothers me about this is, and I, and I think some good can, I, I would agree with the superintendent, some good can come out of it, but basically what it is, is it's a whole lot of paper shuffling and a whole lot of time, um, for our district people to, 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 to perform this function. Um, you're gonna have four or five people come down here, and they're gonna, uh, want their own little area to work, and they're going to expect to be presented with, um, truckloads of, uh, documentation that we had to assemble. Um, it would be much easier for them to come in, and we'll tell them what, what's wrong with the system, we know what's wrong with the system, we know where the system is falling short, we, and we know what the answer is, so it would be a lot easier for everybody if we just did that, if they just came down, sat down, and we told them, you know, what is wrong with the system. So, and the other thing that bothers me is this, is I have it known for a fact, 'cause I've been around for a while, that Wareham gets pulled for these things all the time. You know, here we are, one of the lowest per pupil costs in the state, and we're being pulled by, for these audits all the time. I don't know what the criteria is for pulling Wareham as to participate in these audits, but this last audit that we had, it couldn't have been more than four or five years ago.
About six.
Six? All right, so I stand corrected. And I know for a fact that there are communities that have never, ever been audited by the Commonwealth or Massachusetts Department of Education, something wrong with that picture. So, yes, some good can come out of it, but you know what, I've been around too long, I, I seen it come and I seen it go, and just this, to, to be quite honest with you, this just, just aggravates me.
So, I don't know if he should be interviewed.
No, because when they're here, I'll just probably take the day off.
Dr. Rubenovic, Mr. Mu, Mr. Chair, so does that mean I should take back the invitation for Dr. Sylvia to be the greeter?
And you know, and it's not the fault of the four or five people that are gonna come, it's not their fault, but it just bothers me that, whatever, whatever the selection process is, Wareham's name always gets drawn out of the hat, I can't figure that out, but yeah, I wish they'd draw Wareham's name out of the hat to increase our, our, uh, transportation funding, to increase chapter seventy, and to do all those things that would help us in solving the problems that they're going to, that they're gonna recognize. So, yeah, they recognize that the town did not financially support education, well, that's a big revelation, okay? What did they do about it? Nothing, zero.
Um, I'll move on to the, um, the nutrition standards.
Sorry, apologize to everybody.
Um, this, uh, part was just to, um, you had asked that when that legislation went into effect, uh, it has gone into effect, and lunch prices are going up, it will be on the website, uh, it does go home to, uh, parents in newsletters and opening day letters and so forth. The elementary breakfast, um, is a dollar fifty, the elementary lunch has gone to two dollars, the, uh, secondary breakfast is a dollar fifty, and secondary lunch is two dollars and twenty-five cents, and if you do recall, the, um, average price of, um, doing the meals were two dollars and forty-seven cents, so we're still below, um, what the cost comes in and that we need to get to, so, um, this was trying to do it gradually over the two or three years like the committee asked. So, that's, that report. And the last thing is about the high school and the NIASC, um, this seems to be the year of, um, visits. The, um, high school, um, NIASC, which is the accreditation of, it's a ten-year accreditation visit, uh, we will also have a team of, uh, four or five people coming in, um, we are funding them to stay in a hotel, um, we are giving them, um, a room to use and laptop computers to use, um, they will be observing the comings and goings and curriculum and, um, self-study that the high school has done, they will be reporting back, and we will also get a copy of that, um, and, um, in your package, I believe we have the press release that, um, Mr. Palladino had put together, um, and so, the information, and, um, Dr. Sylvia knows more about it than I do, 'cause I'm sure he's at Sandwich High...
Oh, we did a few.
Yeah.
Is this our first time for this?
No, no, every ten years. It's the first time since I've been over in central office.
Through you. Now, here's a perfect example of something that really counts, because we're accredited every, every ten years, the high school is, and we don't want our high school to lose its accreditation, we want our kids to graduate from an accredited high school, and it does force us to look at our standards and look at ourselves and, and look at all the things, uh, that go into, uh, providing the standard for an accredited high school, and guess what, it's not every four or five years, it's every ten years. And it's a, it's a normal rotation, and every high school in the state, to my knowledge, public high school, is accredited by NIASC, and so, no one skips it, everybody's name gets called, everybody's name gets pulled.
That's all. That's all. Okay. Next, I review the minutes of the executive session for May eleventh and May twenty-fifth, and these are okay to be released for public information, pass those on to Michelle. Any other business? Rhonda?
Some of my business.
Rhonda?
Sure, I just wanted to remind, um, I'll remind two weeks from now also, but there is a kindergarten kickoff for the Hammond and Minnet Elementary students, um, and I know that they're also doing something at DCS, but it's going to be the twenty-fifth, uh, of August, it's gonna be held at the onset band show, um, please, if you have a, a child that's going into kindergarten, this is a great opportunity to meet other parents, have your kids meet some other kids that they're gonna be going to classes with, uh, so again, the twenty-fifth of, it's at five-thirty at the onset band show, the kindergarten kickoff.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Dr. Sylvia?
Uh, just like to make a, just a, a brief statement, uh, about my chair, um, he was my student, and, uh, I fully recognize, uh, his contributions to this town, and, uh, I just, I, I, I regret the fact that he's stepping down as chair, but I am so pleased that he's staying on the board, uh, not only is he one of my ex-students, uh, but he's also a very, very good friend, and I just wanna tell him officially, if there's anything I can do, because I'm retired, uh, to make your job on the school committee easier, please don't hesitate to call on me.
Thank you. Jeff?
I sent to, um, the members of the committee and to Dr. Rubenovic, uh, something I got in the, in my inbox, I think it was yesterday, it could have been today, these are called the Municipal Health Reform Final Emergency Regulations. That mouthful, um, is primarily because this was something the legislature, um, put together and, uh, and the governor signed, which gives municipalities significantly more leverage to, um, change the health plans offered to town employees, uh, approximately fifty percent of them, uh, are employed by us. Um, so, Dr. Rubenovic, through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, could you tell me whether you have had any conversations, uh, at all with our town administrator regarding this critical element that, with respect to perhaps saving some money?
I have had a conversation with the town administrator, um, I received that same document probably about two or three weeks ago, um, and, um, I had a meeting with the town administrator about it, and it was left in his hands to put together, um, a meeting, um, I believe he was waiting for, um, either some legal clarification, um, but he said that he was gonna be pulling together a meeting with the, um, members of the various unions, the, uh, representatives, 'cause that's what that's called for, and I thought there was a thirty-day action period in the legislation, that I wondered when that time clock started.
Well, reading the regulations before he even meets with the health advisory, uh, insurance, health insurance advisory committee, I believe is the name of the group, um, he's supposed to have calculated the savings associated with the changes that he wants to make, um, do you have any idea whether he's made those calculations?
I have not seen any documents, it was a verbal conversation.
Okay, well, if you could keep this committee informed on that issue, I would appreciate it, and if, and if any prompting of the town administrator with respect to that, I think might be a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good, thanks. Um, and just to follow up earlier on Jeff's comments, it's probably a good idea that at our August thirty-first meeting, we talked about, well, this is... I believe that's on...
We already had two meetings.
Is it September the first?
Yeah, September seventh, I think, seven.
Unless we wanted to make one on the thirty-first.
Well, we'll, yeah, we'll review that, but we probably do need to talk about the, the process, um, whether it's a vote to, to reorganize.
I can ask Naomi, if you'd like, for an opinion.
Yeah, just some clarification so that, uh, we do the right thing. No other business, I'll entertain a...
Move adjourn?
Second.
In record time?
Mm-hmm.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Before nine o'clock.
Does anybody have two tens for twenty?
No, I don't.
On this committee?
Come on.
No, I have, no, I just have twenties.
Sorry, only one ten.
Not a problem.